On the 20th of the O G, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Commissioner Yower?
Here.
James just texted me, he expected to be here, he didn't make it. Judge Shaw's here, Commissioner DuPain?
Here.
And Tracy Canada is not gonna make it, so it's just gonna be the three of us. So please stand and join us.
Father, we thank you for the state and everything that you've given us. We ask you to keep all responders and all military personnel in our prayers. And we ask you to look favorably upon the state.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now Johnny Smart had told me he was gonna be here, and I don't think I've seen him walk in the door. Number five on the agenda was open discussion with the emergency medical services personnel in regard to EMS in Carrents County. Is that Johnny? No. If there's anybody here from EMS that would like to say anything, I think we're gonna pass that agenda and let's go back to it, 'cause I can at least go to six and seven and do those without Johnny. So let's get number five and move to six and see if Johnny shows up. If we go to number six, what number six is, it's an announcement of Johnny Smart's retirement letter. His last working day will be with the county on June 30th, 2013. I think that Johnny's been our EMS administrator for the last forty years in Carrents County. And he's retiring due to some health reasons. And in his, in his letter, he mentioned some things about replacements and some stuff that he wants to do. I mean, do y'all want me to read the letter? Do y'all wanna hear the letter? Says, "It is with a heavy heart and much sadness that I must tender my retirement service to Carrents County. Four doctors have all recommended that I retire. Presently, I suffer from chronic severe back pain, but more importantly, I injured my right eye on EMS run on January of 2013. I am now able to use a computer screen for only short periods of time per day, but more importantly, my close-up sight is severely affected, making it nearly impossible for me to do the job I was hired forty-two years ago to perform. This eye problem also extends my ability to perform patient care at an acceptable level. I find myself in a position that I am not a liability to Carrents County rather than an asset. It would be a disservice to the citizens of Carrents County for me to continue in my present condition. My last day at work will be June 30th, 2013. I have been trying to train Casey Eubrow to take over my position upon my retirement, but time has run out. Casey is a fine man, intelligent, calm under stress, and would make an excellent EMS administrator if the county sees fit to go in that direction. If needed, I will help with whatsoever system the Commissioner's courts decides to pursue. I will have about a year of treatment for my right eye, and even then, I may lose my eyesight. My sight will get worse before it gets better. That is, if it gets better. I would like to thank all those that have helped me do my job over the last forty-plus years, both employees and volunteers." There he is, hey Johnny! So that's Johnny's retirement letter, and that's it. I just read your letter out loud, Johnny. No, it doesn't have to be accepted. And then I also have, number seven, is an acknowledgement discussion of a certified letter received from Dr. Soldanya, Carrents County EMS Medical Director in regard to EMS in Carrents County to go into full-time and paid service. Dr. Soldanya wrote a letter, and Dr. Soldanya and Johnny's letters were both dated on the same day, on 6/3/13. And we had tried to put some things in place that didn't go through. So it says, "In light of the recent growth we have seen in Carrents County, it has come time for the county to pursue the implementation of a full-time emergency medical services. This service needs to have a full-time paid EMS administrator with full-time employees to provide transport services as well as transfer services to out-of-town medical facilities. This matter should be taken seriously and conducted in a swift manner to avoid an urgent situation. If you have further questions, please contact my office." That's number seven. So now I wanna go back to Johnny, it's number five. And that's, "Open discussion with emergency medical services personnel in regard to EMS in Carrents County." And that's you Johnny, if you wanna come on up and talk to us. Bring any of your folks with us, are your folks with you?
Yes, there are some here. Talk to me or talk to them, see what they have to say.
Well, I think-
But if I kinda stand sideways, is that okay?
You said you wanted to be able to talk, and you wanted your employees to be able to talk, and so you put it on the agenda so you'd be able to have an open discussion with you and your employees.
What's basically happened is my body is worn out on me. Everything on my right side is worn out. My back, I have chronic pain in my back that I have to take controlled substances to maintain just to be able to do anything. About mid-January, I ran into a glass sliding door. Now, it's kind of one of those things that if I could've had it on film, we could've all got a good laugh out of it. At the time, I didn't think it was a big deal. Didn't have any major problems or anything like that. Before the end of February, I started getting some distortion in my right eye. I couldn't go to the optometrist until the end of March, and it continued to get worse. But the end of March, when I went to the optometrist, he looked at it and said, "Whoa, this is way behind my, beyond my scope of practice. You need to go to a retina specialist in San Antonio. You have a bump or something on your eye, almost on top of your optic nerve." And what I found out was I had tore my retina. I tore a gap into my retina. Fortunately, I didn't tear what's called a macule, which is a membrane in there. That's why I didn't see any blood or little floaters or anything like that in my eye, because I actually, it did bleed when I made the gap, simple way to put it. But I had two alternatives, do nothing and go blind in my right eye, or I could be treated with a cancer drug that would destroy the capillaries inside the gap. The body has a tendency, it has a hole anywhere, it tries to fill it up, it tries to close the gap. And that's what it tried to do with capillaries. So it grew capillaries into it, then let them die, then grew more, then successively over and over and over. Obviously, I took the second choice. I wasn't gonna go blind immediately. There's no guarantees that I still won't lose my right eye, okay? I go once a month and have a needle stuck into my eye and they inject anti- well, it's a cancer medication that destroys rogue cells. And what it does, he's killing out the capillaries that fill the gap up. But as they filled up, instead of being smooth, it made a bulge in my retina. And it's one-half millimeter toward my nose, in other words, it's one-half millimeter medial to my optic nerve. And that distorts everything I see. I have a tendency to, if I reach for something like this, I have a tendency to go to the right of it. At first, I thought it was old age. I'm wearing out, I mean, I just assumed it was old age. So I went ahead and took two shots, and after the second one, I got to talking to him about it, and asking, you know, what I could do to improve the health of my retina so that hopefully I wouldn't get any more gaps or holes or anything in it. And he said, "Whoa, hold on, Mr. Smart, this wasn't caused by your health, he said, something hit you. You either hit something or something hit you." He said, "Something will hit you hard enough to cause this gap to be opened into your eye." And so that's when I found out it was, when I sat down and thought, you know, what have I ran into, or what have I hit? What has hit me? The only thing that it hit my head, or I had hit, you know, normally probably a few times felt like hitting me in the head, but didn't. But I, the only thing that I could figure out was the run, actually, I think Shelby was with me. And when I hit the door, and that was the only thing I could find. But bottom line is that as the first part of June rolled around and the end of May, I had four different doctors, my cardiologist, my retina specialist, my internist, and my GP here at Kennedy, all tell me that I needed to retire, that basically EMS was killing me. That my body was not repairing itself simply because I wasn't allowing it to repair. And so I spent a weekend thinking about it, and finally decided that's the only fair thing for myself and for the county, because I am a liability to the county now, absolutely. I've always been an asset, I think, but now, in all honesty, I'm a liability. I, I guess the fairest thing would be, Pete, would you want me to start an IV on you? Seriously, fair question. No, you would. But, but no, you wouldn't want me to, knowing what you know what I've told you. That's a simple fair question. It's gonna take at least one year of treatment. Now, what did happen, they expected about a three to four percent improvement, and I had about a forty percent improvement in my eye. And it caused a disorder in my eye that has actually made it possible for them to use a laser on my eye after about another six to eight injections. And they think they may be able to save my eye. Now, this is, this is a whole lot of speculation, but the bottom line is that I'm not able to take EMS calls anymore. My back can't handle it, and I can't see well enough to do the paperwork. Someone asked me, "Well, can't you do just the administrative part?" When I look at a computer screen, if any of y'all have ever looked at computer screens, they're not this one nice solid screen. In reality, they're actually flash. And that tears my eye up. My left eye is trying to cope and compensate for my right eye, so I can't use a computer screen but about a half hour in the morning, about a half hour in the evening maximum. Paperwork, as long as I've got my magnifying glass, well, I can do the paperwork. But basically, it comes back down to the same thing. I am no longer an asset to Carrents County. I am definitely a liability. Only thing left to do is for me to retire. I knew that this is the beginning of the fiscal year planning, and I wanted to make it as, how shall I put, as painless as possible for the commissioners and the judge, in the sense that being the beginning of the fiscal year, you'll be able to plan for whatever you decide to do. If this would've happened, say, the first of October, you had been in a situation where your fiscal year would've been starting, you wouldn't have had time to plan for it. Hopefully with this, you'll be able to decide what you wanna do from this point forward. Any questions? Now, a lot of people have asked me, "What are we gonna do?" Well, the days of the volunteer is fast, fast coming to an end. And I'm not only speaking about EMS, I'm speaking about fire departments and everything. People do not have the time anymore. Time is money, and they don't have the time which is money. Used to, were a shop owner or a business owner, would let someone off for two hours or three hours and not worry about it. Those days are gone. When you're paying somebody fifteen to twenty dollars to work, you expect them to be there and to work, and not be out making an EMS call or a fire call or this type of thing. So, in all fairness and honesty, I, I can't see how we can continue with a volunteer system. So that, that leaves a small number of things you can do. Now, before I go anymore, I wanna, I wanna be real clear about what I'm talking about. I am not talking about making transfers to other hospitals and this type of thing. I'm talking about 911 services. That's where we pick someone up and take them to the local hospital, or ship them out by helicopter to a distant trauma hospital of whatever level we need. We have a viable transfer service here in Carrents County. Now, I don't know, there may have been a law change, but I know that thirty years ago, it was against the law to be in competition with a private enterprise. And for, for good reason. I mean, I think most everybody would agree that a government body, if they wanted to go into competition for whatever, I mean, if they wanted to put up a raspus stand, they could sell raspuses for a half a cent a piece and make, and run everybody else out of business, because they have the money of the taxpayer to pay for the difference. So we have a viable transfer service that does a good job. So when we speak, I'm speaking about the 911 service, not the transfer services that would take people in and out of the hospital, from the rest homes to the hospital, this type of thing. Is there any questions about that? You know, there is no law, to my knowledge, that says the county even has to provide a 911 service. I believe that one of the rules of the Association of Counties, and correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I may be wrong, says that the county, to be a member of the Association of Counties, should be able to assure the taxpayers or the citizens of the county, which isn't necessarily the taxpayers, but the citizens of the county, that they would have ample ambulance service from their home to a hospital, to whether it's local or distant or whatever. Because there are counties in the state of Texas that don't have hospitals, and so they have to cross county lines. But there is nothing that says the county has to, to service anyone. It just, it comes down to a matter of moral and ethical values. Any questions? I see right now, the options I see is number one, advertising and hiring a outside firm or inside firm, Texas Regional, and I know search reps here, they may wish to bid on the 911 service. Perfectly good, there's nothing wrong with that. When I say outside service, I'm, I'm simply saying outside of the, of the county offices and the county system that we have in place. The first one is to go to an outside service that we would have a drawn contract, that we could control their actions. We can control an outside company as much as we wish to, or as little as we wish to. It just comes down to oversight. Comes down to the contract, you're right. I'm sure, all three of y'all, there's been enough controversy, you know what I'm talking about contracts. The contract makes a whole lot of difference. Their second option would be to turn it over to the hospital district. And everybody says, I've heard, I will say everybody, I've heard lots of people say, "Well, that's great, we'll have local control." Well, that's not necessarily true. Just because it's the hospital district has it doesn't mean they're gonna be controlling it. Most likely gonna be some nurse that will be controlling it. So I'm not sure about the control part, I'm just not real sure that's, that's an answer, okay? If the county goes out and hires a company to take over the 911 portion of the transports, the county at any time would be able to terminate that contract and go back to a system of their own choosing. Just because we don't have a paid service now, doesn't mean that two years from now, we can't train people, build buildings, and put in our own system again. This doesn't have to be the end of Carrents County EMS. It could just be a slight delay in the process, okay? Now, another thing is, a fire department can be a division of a fire department. If you look at the numbers of EMS services across the nation, the largest percentage is part of fire departments. It's a, it's a, them are godsend for a fire department because it gives them a budget that we're, in the past, they had to beg for money. Now with EMS in their fire departments, they have lucrative budgets. So it's good for them. The second one is the hospital-based EMS systems. Now, they run a gamut from excellent, if you look at East Texas Medical Center, they run their own EMS system, and it's, it's one of them that if you could copy it, you would have an excellent system. The vast majority though, about sixty percent of the hospitals' base systems are rated at port of fare. Now, you can go in and you can research all this stuff, and it varies, data says what you want it to say, but that's, that's the basic thing. Now, when you hire a company, you put in the contract what you want. You want certain response times, you put it into the contract, what kind of response times you want. And of course, you keep them within reason. You put into that contract what you want them to do and what you don't want them to do. You want, you want them to do strictly 911 runs, that's what you're gonna compensate them for. If they want to do transfers, that's something they're doing on their own and you don't have to pay them. Now, again, I believe that private enterprise should always take precedent over a government-run service. Now, that being said, if privately-run service isn't doing a good job, it's failing its immediate goal, then yes, then the government has to step in and do something, obviously. But in not very many days, I'm gonna be out of all this. Now, the doctors tell me from my body to repair itself, will take four months to one year, and probably over one year. My, my retina specialist asked me at the end of May, when was my last vacation that I took? Well, I've never taken a vacation, so that was an easy answer. So I had two doctors come, and I need to take up fly fishing, learn how to tie flies and go fishing. One of them told me to go to the mountain, stay up there till I could learn how to tie all the flies, and learn how to catch trout, and cook them and eat them. Well, I don't know if I'll do that, but I've got to get out of the emergency services again. Now, that being said, I could consider an oversight role if you go to a paid service, whether it's at the hospital or anything like that. I have, I started in EMS in November of 1970. Tomorrow, Carrents County EMS will be forty-two years old. It's a long time. But- My days in ambulance is over. Not much else to say.
Thank you, Sammy.
I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you.
And I know some of Johnny's personnel had some stuff that, this meeting was only posted three days ago, but a lot happened within those three days, let me tell you. How we ended up getting here today is, is when Johnny first sent this letter to me, and I, I took some time to be able to talk with Casey, and Casey said, "If we would be here today, probably not," because Casey says, "You know, I wanna think about it." And Casey says, "Well, maybe, you know, I was actually looking at trying to get a little bit more experience before I started doing this." And so that was going to be, Casey was just gonna try to slide in there. And then that was not, Casey really put some thought into it, and come Friday night, he says, "You know, I, I was thinking yes, but now I'm thinking no." And so I had to post a meeting come Monday, and there's probably more knowledge out there now than there was Monday, because there's, like I said, a lot has happened within this seventy-two plus hours. And I know I've heard from most of the emergency services personnel wanting to be able to talk, and then when Johnny and I were talking about putting this agenda together, we had for his, the personnel to be able to talk if there was anything that they wanted to say in regard to how they felt about EMS, or that they thought a direction that it might gonna go. And I know I've talked to, I've probably talked to all of you at one point in time. Did any of you guys wanted to say anything?
So again, for you, those of y'all that don't know me, I am Casey Eubrow, and Johnny has mentored me quite a bit, you know, coming into EMS. I started here in Carrents County, I got my EMT from San Antonio. I came down here, you know, I'm a homegrown boy, and Carrents County is unfortunately not the little old Carrents County that we used to see. I mean, you go to a gas station, you know what I'm talking about, you sit in line to be in a home, you know what I'm talking about. The increase in call volume has skyrocketed, and yes, Johnny has given me the opportunity to take the position as EMS administrator. And at first, you know, I was, I was really thinking about it, and I was like, "Yeah, you know, I'd probably put some time and effort into it and get it done," you know, but the more and more I thought about it, I'm, I'm twenty years old, and I'm just, I've just not got my paramedic, and I've been a paramedic for six, almost seven months now, and I wanna further my career. And my biggest thing is, if I cannot commit to something a hundred and ten percent, and I know I'm not gonna have any questions that I can get the job done, I would've took the position. I just, I don't think, if I were to accept that position, I would be doing, I wouldn't say a disservice to Carrents County, but I don't think I'm in a position to where I could get everything done that needed to be done. Paperwork with the state, Medicare, all this stuff, you know, comes into play. Yes, I know people will be behind me and help me along the way, but still. Where to go now with the EMS service? I, unfortunately, I don't, like Johnny said, the days of the volunteer EMS service have come and gone. The, the patient care that has been provided, yes, it's gotten better, but it's still, it's not where it needs to be. I mean, we put a lot of thought and effort into, you know, call calls, getting things updated and all this stuff, and we've come a long ways, and I will say that, and I thank the county for helping us with that. But I think a full-time service, whether it be private enterprise, whether it be hospital-based or Carrents County's own, needs to come into play. The thing about Carrents County having their own full-time EMS service, there's a lot of thought, effort, paperwork, all this stuff has to come into play, paying overtime, getting certain A, B, C shifts, all this stuff has to come into play. It's gonna take a good six months to a year to get all this in one little bucket and present to the Commissioner's Court and say, "Okay, this is what we need." Whether it be private enterprise or whether it be hospital-based, I prefer either one. But my biggest thing is, the citizens of Carrents County, we're gonna think about. I mean, whether, either war or either service that can be picked, it needs to be something that is thought about, and we need to have some time and thought, there needs to go into that to say, "Okay, this is the best way to do it, this isn't the best way to do it." And we don't know what else to say, honestly. I mean, we have, we have seen the need to change over a year ago. I mean, we, we've said, as soon as the whole boom hit, we said, "Something needs to happen, something needs to happen," whether it be some type of paid, somewhat paid service, or something needs to happen to where we can get a building established, or we have people that are willing to come down here and work. I, I don't know what the answer is gonna be, honestly. Any questions on me, on my part? I mean, I, like I said, I really can't suggest you the war, but something definitely needs to happen, not whether it be tonight, whether it be in the next couple of weeks, but obviously right now, we're looking at, we're out of an administrator. I don't know who the prime candidate is going to be, or what that's going, what has to happen to be changed, but something has to happen very quickly. And if, like I said, I don't think that the paid volunteer service, yes, it's, we have had it for, I think Johnny said, forty-two years? It was something we're proud of, you know, we don't wanna see Carrents County EMS go away into something else, but it's come to the point in time that we cannot continue to survive how we are right now. So, any questions for me?
May I say one more thing? I didn't actually say, we're one eye per other. I didn't actually say, we have one I propose. What I would like to see happen would be for the county to draw up a contract and hire a firm to take over 911 service. Take some time, draw up a good contract, and that would be the fastest system. Once a contract is lit, as soon as they can bring trucks in, they can have, we're looking at possibly as, as short of time as a month or even quicker. If we go with training our own people, that's a whole different situation, you're looking at months. If we go with the hospital, same situation, you're looking at months. Now, rumor has it, from good source, that the state is fixing to put a moratorium on transfer services. There's sent there too many. And so the state of Texas is getting ready to limit for two years the amount of permits they give out for transfer services. 911 services won't be affected. And existing services that make transfers won't be affected. But what I would go with, my choice, would be to write a contract, try to write a very, very good contract, go with two-year contracts only. During that two years, we know we have to move road bridge out of its present location because it's a danger. We're lucky we haven't had a wreck there. We know it's got to be moved. We've already made plans for it, we've made plans for building and building. We made plans for building an EMS building. I think the architects are supposed to meet tomorrow. I'm flying out tomorrow to Odessa and I think now they're going to meet next week, is that correct, Shelby? I would like to see the county bring a service in, say for a two-year period of time. During that two-year period of time, work toward getting a building built that would be set up for emergency services. And when I talk about emergency services, I'm not talking just EMS. I'm talking about services that would come into play during any kind of disaster, during periods of high rain. We have an emergency management director, did I get that right?
Coordinator.
Coordinator, okay. Shelby was in that position. He needs a place or she needs a place to be. We need a central location for all this stuff to be. And when we build a building, we need to take that into consideration. And we need to be moving forward, setting this stuff up, and in two years or four years, come back with Carrents County EMS as a paid service. The trick to a paid service of any kind is the protocols. You get a progressive doctor and he will write progressive protocols. That's who actually controls the medical aspect of, of any EMS system, whether they're transfer or whether they're 911. But I would like to see us move toward the direction toward, one day we will again have Carrents County EMS function as a division of Carrents County. Now, if we go with the hospital district taking it over, and I'm not trying to pick on the hospital district, there's lots of good people there. If we go with that, we will never be able to completely fulfill going back to Carrents County EMS and a building that will house communications and emergency services. And that's, that's something that we need. We don't, we have one in Kennedy that most people don't even know about. I mean, it's a, it's just one room, but it's so far in two, three situations.
Sometimes two or three.
We've had one situation where we've switched over to it. If our communications go down, that's where we go. So that's the direction we need to be headed to. It's not a, the government hasn't mandated it to the point that we have to have it yet, but the day is coming. And so if you want my suggestion, it would be hiring outside firm. And again, I would limit the contracts to two-year contracts. They give us some room to do what we want to do, make plans. Unfortunately, I was hoping to have two to five years to farm Casey into an administrator. Being a good paramedic on the street is only a small portion of what an administrator does. But unfortunately, that didn't happen. And Casey is a fine young developer, but he hasn't had enough administrative training to be able to step into the situation. I think he could do it, but I hate to see anybody put into a position where they can be cut to shreds easily. And it's a tough spot. But that's what I would suggest. I don't say kill the system, I'm saying, let's do what we can to bring the system back in two years or four years. Something that we can be proud of and improve system. Now, there's going to be a period of time where you're not going to have an administrator. I will continue to take care of everything that needs to be done to what point I can until y'all come up with a decision. And I'll be honest, I got irritated at Audica's office and I, I decided I wouldn't do it. But deals have to be turned in, there's legal work has to be taken care of, there's stats, I think probably, probably, Stacy, you know what I'm talking about, you take care of the administrative fee in the Texas region. The ambulance run is the smallest part of the, of the scheme. It's the tip of the iceberg.
It's where it starts.
That's where it starts. So you're going to have to have somebody and I'll fill in.
Well, wait, Johnny.
Until somebody can take over.
We're kind of jumping up to the next part.
Yes.
Can we see if there's anybody from the EMS personnel that wants to say anything? Can we move to the next item on the agenda?
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to say something.
Let me say.
I will try not to ramble on, but I, I don't, I don't have the answers that we need. But the main thing that this, everybody needs to look at is what is best for the people of Carrents County. Those people out there are who we serve and those are the people that deserve the best service that they can get. What we have is broken and it's been broken. And we have a chance to fix it. How we're going to fix it, I don't have that answer. But I know what we have is broken. We are running short of time is our whole problem. We don't have the time that we need to actually look into how we need to do it because we're short of time, which puts us in a different body. We can't be continually calling the sheriff's office and putting us out of service because we don't have people to work and having the burden put on Texas regional who already has their service that they may have calls for as well. A paid service, I agree it needs to go on paid service, but you can't do a paid service overnight. You can't come up and figure out who can be full-time, who can be part-time. You can't pay day shift and have your volunteers at night, that's just not right. That all takes planning. The calls that we have, like Casey said, the calls to pick up, we're not running just minor calls, we're running major, major multi-casual accidents, we're running major trauma. Those all need the type of people that can handle those and do the best care for the people out there. And it's not just Carrents County, it's the people that have moved into Carrents County and the traffic that we're getting in Carrents County. Some days we may have one call, some days we may have 10 calls, some may be nothing, some may be something that you don't want to go home and sleep at night because you remember what you just came home from. I don't know what the answer is. That's a decision that y'all have to make. I can tell you that what, what we have to have if we're going to keep it is EMS director. We've got to have that to function. If we don't have that, your only other choice is to contract it out. I just don't know that the time, it is, time is of essence and I don't know how a, it just needs to be a good decision and that's going to be up to you guys to make. I can only tell you where we're at. We don't have a facility to stay in. Our facility that we have is really sad. What we sleep in, for the ones of us that do stay, not everybody that some volunteer goes down and stays, some of us do stay down at the building when we're on shift. We have one small room with homemade bunk beds that Casey made with air mattresses on, and that's what we stay in. And it's about as big enough to turn around two people in. So you're not going to get, until we get a facility to, to house people to come in, we're not going to get the kind of people we need. So that's another situation that we have that's got to be looked at. What's the answer to that? I don't know. Everybody says build a building. Well, where's going to build a building? How are you going to get the land? Everything has gone up. There's lots of, lots of, lots of, lots of questions as to how that's going to work. But until we get a facility, I don't think we're going to have the people come and, and want to be here. Oh, you have people, oh yeah, I'll come work for you. And then they come in and they're, this is what I got to stay in? They're not going to do it. And then I, you know, you can't expect people to come from San Antonio or wherever they come from, whether it's here or San Antonio or whatever, to stay with the facilities we have. This is just my opinion. I just know that we've got to come up with an answer and I don't have the answers for you. I just know that whatever answer it is needs to be for the people of Carrents County and that's what they need to look at. Think about your parents, your kids, whoever, whenever something happens.
My name is, she's been out there with Carrents County EMS for 21 years now. And as Casey said, a paid service does not happen overnight. And I respect him for stepping down. He's, he's a good medic. And I told him I'd help him any way I could. And like I said, it's not going to happen overnight. Maybe we need six months to phase in the paid system. Look at our, look at our budgets, look what we have to do to get a paid system. The building, like Becky said, we're not, we can't get any help. We, we give it all we got, that's all we can do. But at the same time, we can give it some more. I know, he's got, nobody's quit. Nobody. And you got to have a right frame of mind to do this. And I believe we can make it work if, if we all get together. There's, there's no need in closing the door, turning the lights out on us, because we're no better than that. We're all taxpayer citizens of Carrents County and we need to stick together, we need to make it work. So whatever it takes, we need to do, whatever we need to do, we need to make it work. I don't know what else to say. You know, we need to keep it here. There's a lot of discrepancies, you know, hospital pay, some paid services are monsters. I've, I've seen it, I've heard it, but what do you do? We need help. And I believe if we have a building, we can get the people, like Becky said, to help us. A place to house people, you know, might take six months, might take nine months, but we need to not walk away. You know, I just, I can't see it happening. We, we need to make this work.
Thanks.
My name is Kenneth Funtz, I'm with Self-Takes as an engineer, we're a private company and we heard about the situation, so we wanted to...
We're not to you yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me finish with the EMS people that were actually doing that and then we'll move on, because I'm sure that the hospital people and everybody else have something to say too. So let's wait till we get to that number and then we'll...
My name is Pity Divya, Stephen's brother. I know assistance may be perfect, but...
Here's a chance.
Thank you, Pity.
May I say one thing? I've heard people talk about how long it's going to take and everything. It's going to take however long than it takes to draw up a contract, which there are on team places you can call up and say, hey, can y'all give me a copy of your contract? Okay? Then it's just a matter of time, it's how long do you have to advertise and then blow off it? And they can have trucks in here right after that. Okay? The question just came out, they got to have a building where they're going to stay. We can buy a portable building and set it up to two crews with showers and a ref room where they can watch TV and everything. You can have a portable building in here in two weeks' time. That's not a big deal. We're looking at, I would say, if, if we go with paid service, we could probably have one in under two months, probably even under six weeks. Now, is that the answer? That's something that's a commission for, that they're going to have to discuss and come up with an idea.
Just leave it at that, discussion part. Now we're going to leave that and we're going to number eight. So this is discussion, considering action regards to EMS services in Carrents County. And we didn't know, we're, and this is what I told Johnny, we knew a lot what could happen in these 72 hours, we didn't know what it was. So I know that we have a couple of different companies here, we have EMS here, our architects here, everybody's here. And that way everybody can hear what's being said or what's being contemplated. We've got our hospital here and so everybody's got their role. If anybody, if, you stood up and so if you would like to start and tell us, I'm sorry...
Let me ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay, how many EMS personnel do we have here? How many, how many are paramedics? How many are intermediate? The rest are basic, right? Okay. When we have different services, we have a private service, a hospital district service or whatever charts that we have, are there any difference in the criteria of the personnel that work in those services? Do they all have to be paramedics for one? Do there some, can some of them be basic? Can you, can you explain that?
Certain questions that each person is trained to accept by the state. Now, the scope of what product, of what skills they can provide is set by medical.
If I understand your question, Pete, is what do we need to have an ambulance drive out there on the road and function? The state says two certified people above, equal to or above the level of EMT basic. That's what the state's minimum is.
No, no. You can still run ECA.
Well, last I heard, they have taken ECA out of the picture.
We, just for us that don't know the acronyms and abbreviations, can you use some English words?
EMT is interme, EMT, emergency medical technician. EMTI is emergency medical technician intermediate, which, which can do IV therapy and airway intervention, all they have, or also what they call advanced now. And then you have your paramedic who's, who can do all that, but go further with administering drugs. And then you have what they call, and I don't ever understand this because of licensed paramedic, you have a guy who's a paramedic, he has a licensed paramedic, may have got a degree in pest control, but he's got a licensed paramedic on it, which does not mean to nothing.
It's changed some now with our specialized classes, but that in a nutshell is it.
My question is this, in the different choices of service that we have, today we have volunteer service, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, if we go to a different service, is there any difference in the qualifications that are required of the personnel?
We're going to pay somebody to do the service and we're going to want paramedics taking care of the patient. Okay? That's the primary, that, that is the primary thing. I mean, let's face it, anybody with, with training on emergency vehicles could drive a truck. But the person taking care of the patient needs to be a paramedic if possible. That's the highest level of care.
You have to have two certified people by the state of Texas that are, that can administer care and know the operation of, of an ambulance or, or truck, as they call it. It could be, you could have two intermediates, you could have two EMTs, you could have an EMT and a, and an intermediate, you could have EMT and a paramedic, you could have two paramedics, that's whatever you choose to how to stack your truck. The staffing and the skills is, is delegated or is by the state of Texas with the, with criteria of the skills and this level of care they have to do.
Each one of those patches carry us, what we call a scope of practice. That scope of practice, that intermediate has certain items he can do, the paramedic, only paramedic skills can be done, basic, only basic skills can be done. That's the difference from one versus two versus three, is their level of, their scope of practice and what they can do.
of what they can do in the field or as a paramedic. I couldn't go and administer medication to somebody that's a paramedic, that's a paramedic because that would get my license pulled.
I understand that. My big question is, if we go to a different system, is it going to be a different qualification for the personnel that has...
They're still, yeah, paramedics, basics and intermediates, yes.
The state's, the state's requirements will stay the same. But the county can require what level they want the truck to be staffed with. Okay? Did I answer?
But you have to, you have to comply with the state standards.
Yes. That's the minimum requirement. And that not only includes who's in the truck, what level of qualifications they are, but it also includes all the equipment, medications, everything that is in the truck. They specify minimums.
Okay.
I've been doing a lot of research on this and I've been talking to a lot of people. Everybody does. I've been EMS 27, 30 years. And I'm part of the Orange County EMS, but I'm also county commissioner right now, the Tuckis County Commissioner. I met with Dr. Sodana, called me, and I visited with him the other day. And he had some concerns. And one of the concerns was, and we're with Mr. Lee, the hospital administrator, and both of them had a, have a concern is one, is that they want the best service, best care they can, the county can provide. And also, they want to be able to have their patients that they need to be moved on for, for further level of care that's not available at AutoKaiser, to have the ability to pick up that phone, which is nice to have right across the street from the hospital in this Texas regional, where they can provide their service and take them, pick them up out of Kaiser, take them to Victoria Corpus, San Antonio, Beville, wherever they need to go. And the problem was that when Carls County could not, didn't have a full crew during the daytime, that the nurses there, and Mike was one of them, and other staff there, they had to get creative. They had to make phone calls, trying to get to take care of their patients and keep AutoKaiser's hospital and, and provide the level of care that AutoKaiser needs to provide. So I was talking with, with Dr. Sodana. He expressed that, that probably a paid service would, would be the best possibility that we could do. When I spoke with Mr. Lee, I asked him, was there a conversation that the medical board or the hospital has had among themselves about possibility of one day taking EMS, you know, as a hospital-based EMS? If there has been any conversation, it's minimal, but it's something that you'd have to look at, in my opinion, maybe a year or so down the line, budget years and coming down. It might be two years before they could even think about this. And there are some other questions that would have to be asked. After that, I went and talked to Texas Regional. Eventually, the building that they have was offered to the county over a year ago. And the county, at the time, declined. Well, I was, I visited with him, you know, and I looked at the building. And the building would, compared to what Carls County EMS now, this is a Taj Mahal compared to what Carls County EMS has to work in. There were two issues that I thought about and I, I discussed it, but I never, I just mentioned it, threw it out there. And one was the possibility of leasing that building for a year, year and a half or something like that, which if we could get in that building for a year and a half, Texas Regional could have a chance coming back to that building at one time or probably further selling it later on if needed to. And during that time, we bought that building. And during that time, I talked with Lorraine and suggested, we just talked, and the architect, and that maybe it's a possibility that, I know construction can be done in phases. You can do it in sections. And I thought, well, you know what? I looked at Kendall County's ambulance center, and it's about our size we have here, but it's a little bit different design. You can build three bays and a little office section and little sleeping quarters with the intention later on, a road and bridge move. You could, you could do that in a section where you could add on to it, continue going. I even talked, Lorraine, we talked about, you know, if Carls City ever builds a fire station in the future, and it might happen, why couldn't we put a, partner with the county, with the city, and eventually put in a EMS wing in their, in their fire station where we could have coverage from one end of the county to the other of the county? Now, then again, we go back to staffing. I thought that maybe you could have a full daytime staff. You could have, either we could start with four people or six people, have a rotating shift. You could do four tens, four twelves, and alternate days. Everybody would follow, follow on the weekends and stuff. You'd have coverage in the daytime. Till, till we could get going good, then you could use your volunteer people to cover the night shift or whatever that, you know, that would, that would be. We would get coverage quicker and we could probably get that going quick. I talked with some EMS staff and they said, if the leadership changes, there's a possibility some people would want to come really work if you have a leadership change. And also with a, a better building to work out. There was a question about administrator. Anybody, I asked Dennis Kelly, and I've talked to Danny Denson. I've talked to some other people in other areas about an interim position, maybe, if they would so choose, or somebody would want to be involved in that. If they knew of anybody and the interim person could do that, till we decide what we need to do after the budget year. A lot of it's going to hinge on what the budget year has to do. I am not in favor of a private service coming in here. We're like a bunch of, we're like, we're like roadkill right now. We've got private services circling us like I don't know what. No offense, guys, but let's put it in the background. But as, as with the time we've spent in EMS and Texas Regional has been, been very good about trying to support the, support the EMS system locally because they have a vested interest in this place. They live here. They have, they're from here, they've been around here for a while. And they want what's best for Carls County. And I like to see Carls County people take care of Carls County. That's, that's just personal, that's me. Texas Regional, when they take a lot of service, two things happen. One, they lose money from the transfer. And two, AutoKaiser loses a way to transfer people. And, but that's the way I'm looking at it. But I really believe we need to go to a full, I mean, start off with a paid, paid daytime service and slowly phase that in over a budget year. And then get to the point where, see what we can get. I think something else in there.
Steven Leal's also expressed interest in an interim internship. I do have a question, though. How would we do a paid service during the day and a volunteer service at night?
Just like you do it now with volunteers?
I mean, with the volunteers?
I think that...
The daytime people, there's no, everybody has other jobs.
I think you're, from what people I've talked to that have tried to do that, it hasn't worked out very well. I'm not going to say it hasn't worked. Some have made, have things to make it work reasonably well. But typically, humans being humans, what happens is the night crew getting volunteered, they walk in at three o'clock in the morning, they just work for Rick, bloody ambulance, half stop, and they say, hey, I'm not getting paid. But the day crew, they're the ones that get paid, so let them do it. And that's where the problem starts. And that's human nature. We can't ever overlook human nature. The weak points are the daytime and the weekends. No one will work weekends. One of my cohorts in crime is W. Wade. He's in charge of Shirts, Sublow EMS and covers several counties. And he was complaining to me not too long back that our times, and I, I have no idea how many employees he has. I know his shirts division runs seven units. So he has a considerable number of employees. And one of his big problems is periodically, he has to work weekends because nobody else works for him. So you can see, there is a, a labor problem. Texas Regional, y'all ever have any trouble trying to find people to work weekends?
No.
You ain't covered. You're lucky.
We have very good staff.
But it is always a problem in most systems. And that's kind of a fact of life. Nothing we go to is going to be perfect. Everything we, everything we try is going to be difficult. It's going to take time. Now, if you choose to go with a paid service, there are a lot of people out there. It's real easy to pick up a phone and get copies of contracts. An old fellow one time told me, there's a wealth of information out there, free for the asking. And that was 40 or 50 years ago, and the old fellow's right. You can, you can make a few phone calls and find out a lot of information. Live Oak County has a paid service. I think they use Acadia. Not sure about Abiscotia.
They have their own EMS.
They have their own units. I'm not sure about Abiscotia, like I say. But there is a precedent out there. You can go out there and find copies of contracts. You don't have to start from ground to zero. You know, there is help out there that's available for the asking.
I don't know if you can walk there, but I've seen her hand up, but I don't see a face.
Amanda Serna. Amanda Serna, I work for Texas Regional and I also volunteer with the county. I just want to throw one thing out there. I've seen it done before because I used to work in Beville for Angelco as well, where they try to keep within the county, where they teach people their basic skills in return for volunteer service for the county. Black Excuse Me, Wilson County does that. And that's something else to consider if they return it back through a private service, whatever y'all go to, is putting a class up, training people to be basics. And then in exchange for paying for their classes, have them volunteer for the service for at least a year. So that might take care of some of the staffing situations there.
One of the problems now with EMS is the cost of the training. We're used to an EMT class was $200, $300. Now you're looking at probably $1,000 bucks. I haven't had to take one for a while, so I'm not sure about the cost. But it's, the price has gone up extremely. So, you know, the cost is, is higher than it used to be. And if the county goes any way where they're going to ask people to train, they're going to have to come, have a financing plan to where they can pay for the training and the person pay them back in the way of, of, of just talk a loan, or they're going to have to pay them back in a period of time for volunteer work. Now, the ideal thing, of course, is volunteer work. Does that feel, or does that give you some knowledge on that?
I'm sure just about everybody in here knows me. And I, I usually don't beat around the bush, so I'm going to just get to the point. What it boils down to is money. It's going to take money to fix it. The most cost-effective way to provide EMS is a county-run service. I've run anywhere from volunteer to rural to major city, this and that. I've seen it from all aspects. And what do you want to pay? How do you, you know, you can pay a little bit of money, provide daytime staffing, rely on volunteers at night. You can go pay in a full-time crew, round the clock, costs you a little more money, gives you coverage, round the covers. You want to contract it out, you can do that. That's probably going to cost you the most money in the long run. Simply because you're going to contract with a private service that has one bottom line, making money. The time I spent in a county private service, the company I worked for, we stayed out of 911 because it's a money-losing exponential. This and that. So if you contract with a private service, you're going to have to pay. One interim fix you could do is maybe cut a deal with the private service to provide you contract staffing and give you time to ramp up to hire your own personnel and get us through the limit. But it just boils down to one simple thing, folks. One spent.
I can give you some numbers on dollars. Transfer services, usually you collect, you're about 95% of the allowed. 911 emergency services, if you can collect around 40, 45%, you're doing really pretty good. But that is also the most expensive runs you make because of the type of equipment you use and the amount of loss and damage to the equipment. If I have to drill hole in a bone to get access to you, it's going to cost us $100 minimum, actually about $150. I mean, that quick.
What was your name on story?
My name's Kenneth Fonsen. I'm with South Texas Emmett, Chief Administration Officer. And I heard about your, your deal that you guys are in. So we wanted to be up here and maybe help out with the county for any questions. I've been a paramedic for 23 years. I've worked county, city. South Texas Emmett is a full paramedic system. We've got over 100 employees. We do, our closest city right now, we do business with is Beville, with the hospital response system. And we do answer calls for, for the hospital here when they, when they need us. I agree that the volunteer days are, are over. The people here in this community need a, a full-time paramedic system. You cannot hold a call for a half hour to an hour when someone's in cardiac arrest. Why the, the guys respond at the station and pick up the ambulance and respond? Those days are over. The hospital today, they're not a volunteer, they're not a, will respond from our house and help the people when they get there. EMS is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week job. When it comes down to the service of the community, it's what you guys want. And like the gentleman said, it, it's a cost factor. I mean, an ambulance will run $360,000 a year to operate 24 hours, seven days a week. The equipment that goes in, 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 operating an ambulance, the repairs, the type of equipment that you buy. But as far as right now, we're here to offer our services to the community immediately. If you need something to, to happen, we can send our nearest truck up here and help with an I-1, support the, the volunteers. So there's not a gap in emergency services. We operate full CAT system, 24-hour dispatching. Again, we're a full paramedic system. You guys have any questions as far as the private side, maybe some concerns or something that wasn't answered today?
Laura, can I ask a question right quick?
Yes.
How many people are here from paid services in the, such as Texas Regional? As you can see, we have a good representation of paid services here. So if we need a question answered, we have an ideal opportunity about paid services. Now, if I can say this, and, and I don't think I'm breaking any rules by doing this, Texas Regional has helped us tremendously over the last couple of months. And I want to thank them.
Anytime.
Did anybody else want to say anything?
I'm Stephen Kova. I'm the Operations Manager for South Central Operations for Academy Ambulances. Just wanted to hear the situation and just wanted to let you know that we are here to help as well if need be. We are a nationally certified ambulance service. We staff about 230 employees in the San Antonio, the Live Oak area, and La Deana County. The accredited side of the ambulance service is very stringent. We, about, about 120, about 200 ambulance services or you can achieve that accreditation level. And we are 39 counties strong in Texas. We also service parishes in South Louisiana. It's a real well-developed system. As Mr. Smart said, that, you know, protocols, you know, seem to be, you know, something that you have to continuously work on. We do have very up-to-date protocols. They are being updated regularly. We have a stringent and in-depth quality improvement protocol or process in place to audit tickets, to do the training as, as such. And also have the ability to transmit 12 leads from our ambulances to the CAT labs to activate the cardiac teams earlier than some people could. So they can actually physically see these 12 leads in the hospital before the ambulance can get there. So it's probably a long distance. I heard too, an issue that, you know, some of you guys brought up earlier about... I heard too, uh, an issue that, you know, some of you guys brought up earlier about critical care transports. We have critical care training paramedics, we have critical care ambulances. Basically like mobile ICU units that have ventilators, uh, IV pumps, and especially training paramedics. Uh, definitely, like this gentleman said earlier, if you guys have any questions, definitely, we'll be out with that.
Question? Thank you.
Huh?
No one?
Everybody says something.
And if my car is on the trauma call, need to apologize to the hospital. And sound are good, but here, great dreams, you're spending your money. I'm not a cop, so I'm, uh, tax 27. They're missing the bulk here. It's not about, um, now EMS. This is about providing a service to the community. Right now, Carls County EMS has a great job when they're here. You've had two horrific weeks of, you may have 911, you may not have 911. You may have 911 for a couple hours. Or I may have two basics, they go through a new match, about a stroke pad. Have two basics. Uh, I might as well just throw in the back of the vehicle and get you. We can't do this anymore. We have cars that have been missed because they had some drug site that nobody can find. Where the person doesn't get help from Carls County EMS. Those are things that need to rest. What are the real issues? It's a great ambulance service, great people. I like most of them. They're good people. But we don't have, Carls County EMS definitely has the support. The twenty-four seven, the right skillmates, we do not have the right skillmates. We have a heart attack, we have a stroke, the hospital's gonna move program. How do they administer certain medication to strokes? It starts with EMS. But two basics on the truck, I don't know what I mean. I have no support from Carls County EMS to the hospital. Your skillmates is off, your staff is off, the timing is off. That's the issues that happen. How do you solve this? It's hard to me. Like I said, life's spending your money. That was an EMS connection. We must, what's happening up in the media is, the community, all those great people. Carls County has their own people. They're great people. They need to be supported. Johnny has done a good job. Johnny's been home, so time to go outside, get people in a case, people that wanted you. And answer my case, he's saying, and I told him, I understand this. I was gonna do administration, but somebody got to me, and they need your support. They need to financial support. People have life, we have bills to pay. They can run this. And look at the community now. We have more dead people to handle. We have more heart attacks, more strokes than ever. We can do this anymore. That's what happens. Thank you.
Now, what are you, you're the trauma coordinator?
Yes, ma'am.
And where are you from?
I can't tell you, because anymore taxes.
He's not gonna, he's not gonna say.
I'd be taxed if he'd come.
You should go into the room.
Yes, sir.
I would also say that the board in the past has never, they've not really liked the idea of, of taking on EMS under the hospital district.
We need to decide.
Yeah, I'm David Lee, I'm the Administrator, uh, at the hospital. Um, in the past, they've, like, like Shelby said, there's not been a whole lot of discussion, but what little there has been, I don't see real interest from the board. Um, the other thing from the hospital side is we have a need for a transfer service as well. What's been talked about here is the 911 part of the service. If the hospital takes this on, we have the other side of it. We have a need to transfer these patients to a higher level of care, and there's a potential conflict of interest there. If we since, if we send a transfer out, well, that one's gone for two hours. Well, what if then there's a bad accident and there's a flood of, of 911 need there? And there are two very different things. As has been said, all the money in this is in the transfer side, not the 911 side. But that's the commitment you're making is to the 911 side. And from the hospital perspective, patient kind of perspective, there's a need for that transfer part as well. And that puts us in a bad, in a, in a bad position at times, or could. And also, as has been said, that it would, for the hospital to take it over at this point, it would not be a quick, a quick fix. And from our perspective, this is something that it needs to be addressed much quicker than the hospital would have the ability to do that. We, we don't know how to run an EMS, never have. And so it would be starting from scratch and would not be quitting, for sure, to do it right.
Yes, Mr. Smart?
Sam Pitar. Um, looking at things in, in perspective here, I think our real situation is, is that we don't have a director anymore. Maybe we need to look at that. There are, uh, universities now that are graduating emergency medical technician, I mean, emergency medical administrators, and maybe we need to look at this. There are lots of fire departments that have firemen who are, uh, basically retiring young because of, uh, medical issues that might be interested in the job. But it's all gonna take, it goes back to the statement, money. And after the money, if the guy comes and he sees what he's got here, he's gonna want a lot more money to get things going. But I think, uh, we need to keep it local. I, I feel very strongly about that. Uh, we've got good people in EMS. Spent forty-two years building an organization, and that's just gonna go away. And, uh, I don't know, there's a lot of professional people here that are looking for a niche to get into that only pays forty-five percent. There's gotta be other reasons. So I think we need to keep it in the community and look for a director and work for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smart. So, what is the original question, Mike? To discuss, consider act regarding EMS services in Karnes County. And as always, there's gotta be some legality to that, y'all probably know that too. By statute, I don't know, and I'm not gonna be heard on the spot, so I'm heard just to throw out an idea, but we're gonna have to figure out advertising, we have to figure out contracting. Obviously, this is gonna be over fifty thousand dollars somewhere. Obviously, it's an emergency. Maybe part unsee, not unsee. I don't know what statute says. And because we haven't dealt with EMS since we've been here. None of us have. I mean, I don't know of EMS ever being in this situation. And I've lived here all my life, so I've never, this is, this is new to me.
I have business cards out. I can give one to you, but that's my email address.
Could you look at, at a building?
You need one?
Building, and we can find an interim director, I'm sure, administrator, till we can, till the budget.
Can we have another card?
And we can, uh, actually advertise, give us six, five, six months to advertise for a director. But we need, once, at the end of the month, when Johnny's term expires, we have twenty-four hours to find a EMS administrator, and then we have forty-eight hours to notify the state of the changes and, and plus turn in the proper documentation. And then again, in September, EMS has to get re, we need, by September, have our EMS system relicensed as well as we need to get the Medicare issue taken care of. And by, by that, I mean, there's been a collection problem getting money from Medicare. Don't have this information, don't have that information.
People know.
Put it together for the other companies, they can totally submit with any individual.
We have to get our licensing to be able to charge and collect for Medicaid and Medicare rooms. And that's been expired since last March of two thousand and twelve.
And if we, so, again, I'm, I'm jumping the gun, somebody tell me. So if we decided to, uh, either go to a paid system or go ahead and advertise for bids, or whatever the case may be, without the budget year, would that, how would that work?
Oh, I would say this would qualify as one of the circumstances.
Yeah.
Qualified for minimum budget.
But we need to, following this meeting, we need to, uh, have this quick discussion. What did you say, Pete? I said, you know, we can't, we need to, I'm gonna discuss, consider action. Now, does that mean we, okay, we need to discuss, either for the next meeting, to discuss purchasing a building? At least get out of that flea trap that they're in now? Either we need to advertise for bids, or we go ahead and, and, uh, come up with some numbers for what it would cost a county to go to a paid staff, either four or six people? I don't know, you know, we'd have to see what, what the going rate would be for that, I guess. And then, uh, with the benefits and all.
I don't know if, based on IRS regulations, if you can have a paid and voluntary stuff.
Well, then you'd have to have probably two people.
Shelby, I'm thinking of, uh, is that Levana's there? I think Levana's probably right, it would create, logistically, it would create county problems. Now, I may be wrong, I am not an accountant, okay? But.
John?
Did I, did I say that more or less right?
John, you've been around one full-time truck for six people, twenty-four hours. Dennis' face here. It can be done. Atascosa County is running twenty-four hour trucks, four people. Now, they're running hard and it's tough. I wouldn't do that. But six, you can easily run one truck. And you got twenty-four hour coverage. Now, backup unit, you still consider something for that. You know, you still got Dennis' face, I don't think I would do that, but, you know, they're still there.
Been doing it for ten years, you can do it. Theoretically, with ten years.
But six people's all you need, and an administrator.
Theoretically, uh, to run an EMS unit like we have, a 911 call, when you figure in your vacations, time off, comp time, when you figure in all the, all the little things in, it takes ten people to run one ambulance. Now, that's theoretical. Now, you can make it work with less. But that's the number that, uh, national people have came up with.
I think what I need to know, what I need to know, what to put on the next agenda. I mean, I, that, that's all right now, is what, where do I go with commission's court to be able to make a decision? So it's, it, it was, that's, do you wanna go to a paid service? Do you wanna go to a hospital service? Are we getting an interim administrator? That's what I need to know. I don't know anything about EMS. I don't like.
You're gonna need interim administrator first. Somebody to run it, Sam.
Why don't you form a community committee that's, I think, uh, and listen to figure decisions, considerations, which is a common thing to refer to.
Just like in Live Oak County, I know you got them talking about earlier. Accurately staffed, I'd count, we have two twenty-four hour trucks during the day when the call buy is hired, and have another. Two trucks during the day, basically, and I'd be having two full, you know, trucks that stay up.
I think that would give you a good, what you just said, I think would give you a good idea of what you can expect in Karnes County. Because we're, Live Oak County and Karnes County, population-wise, activity-wise, they're very close. Geography, it was brought out. Yeah, a little bit different, a little bit different side. But Danny is right, it's the municipality. Now, I will do anything you ask me to do. I will help you as much as I can, but please understand that I have trouble reading documents and that type of thing. So if I help you out, somebody might have to read something to me, okay?
Scott, did you have anything you wanted to say? We're listening to EMS. I know you're sheriff, but I know you're EMS too.
Just hearing both sides of it, I mean, I know people are talking about keeping it with people in the county. Well, the honor realizes, this ain't about keeping it in the county. It's about providing EMS to the county. Whether it be Acadian, whether it be Texas Regional, whether it be the hospital, it doesn't really matter. We need somebody here twenty-four seven a day that we know is gonna be here. Because right now, we don't know. You appoint somebody as administrator, whoop-de-doo. Doesn't mean you have more people working for you. It's gonna be the same thing we're in right now. So what, I guess, my opinion would be is, take your bids, take your hospital district, get them all together, and see which one's the best option. Put them all together and see which one's the best option. That would be the best thing to do. That way, you can't win, and you can't lose. You have everything against each other, you know what's good, you know what's bad.
I think, I think that was a good, I think that was a good presentation, Captain. She keeps ready for her answer. My boss.
Do you wanna say something?
I just have a question. I'm from the, like, we have representatives here from, um, Texas Regional, the, the private services. Right on hand, do they have any idea how fast they could have some help here? I mean, we're, like they said, we have periods where we have nobody that can be on call.
I think if it's emergency, you know, it would qualify that we could, you know, sign a contract with anybody for when there is no service, but to actually hire a service, you know, full-time service, we have to go out and do it.
Of course. The stopgap, these people are willing to just bring a unit over and cover when we need it, is that what we're saying?
Judge, if, if I may say, uh, there's something that's emergency, uh, contract, you can go temporarily, you can go to a full-time lead contract with somebody. That could be an option there. So that means something to, uh, go over somebody temporarily or a long time.
Actually, that sounds like a good option.
Yes.
We could have two, I'm sorry, this is difficult, I mean, we could have, uh, two ambulances here tomorrow. It may be advanced life support, uh, paramedic-level ambulances.
Okay, for those who don't know me, my name's Dennis Kelly. I'm the owner, Director of Texas Regional EMS, and we've been operating here in Karnes County for about the last ten years. Most of my employees live here in Karnes County. My wife and I are, or my wife is from Karnes County. Uh, my kid goes, goes to school in Karnes City. I probably, out of this whole group of people here, have more to lose out of this discussion than anybody here.
Most sure.
I can guarantee you. I have been there for ten years when Acadian wasn't even heard of in this part of the country, or anybody else. I know the ins and outs of Karnes County, known Johnny, done whatever's been asked of us. Um, yeah, I take a lot of pride in, in these guys as volunteers. Um, and I don't think, I do not think that the volunteer system has went by the waste. Atascosa County, Quero.
Goliad.
Goliad, Wilson, they all run full-time services with paid employees and volunteers. And they do it like that. I run trucks in Atascosa County, have been their primary backup over there for ten years. Um, you know, it's, it's not a matter of, um, and, and, and the term has been thrown out several times between the private services and the 911 services. We're all ambulance services. My guys at work, I've got two of them sitting over there, both of them have worked for the county, have run on the 911 system. Uh, our protocols are set up for the hospital because we're the main bloodline from the hospital over. What's killing us is, as Scott said back there, not knowing. We just need to know so we can plan and we can make sure. Because what's hurting us is, is not knowing, we're using our guys that, yes, we use to take transfers, and that is where we make our money. There is no mistake about it. I'm not saying that 911 calls don't pay, but our money is made on transfers. We're having to take those guys and move them over. And just so everybody knows, in Karnes County, Texas Regional EMS, we run full-time paramedic staff trucks. So every time you call us, you get a paramedic. So it's not like we're podunk ambulance service out here that doesn't, that, that we're not anybody. Because we're getting, we're getting and giving, between us and Karnes County EMS, the people in Karnes County are getting the best care that's out there. And that's.
To back him up right quick, unofficially, Texas Regional has been our backup for considerably length of time. And they've done a good job at it.
So what do I need to put on the next agenda?
All right, Bo, our next agenda needs to have an appointment over, interim director for Karnes County. Our service has to stay on. We have to get...
Okay.
What does it matter? I have nothing, we need that, we have, we didn't, we didn't have kids, or right through their services.
Emergency services, or just, is Dennis and Stacy still going to do, or what do we need to do?
Well, we need to do, I think you do want to be a, a primary backup for Karnes County, with their, you know, some type of agreement that's funded for that. We need to discuss if you want to go in the paid, or you know, some tax for private services and bids.
Contract applications for backup? Okay, and then the other one was what, which I want to know?
Put on your, uh, consider a bid, request bids for, uh, emergency services. And then slash...
For full-paid EMS services?
Yeah.
Twenty-four, seven?
Twenty-four, seven.
EMS services. Okay, now, also, there was a question, yes, Norma?
I, I mean, I'm not sure if everybody is aware, because we do consider ourselves volunteers, because there's nothing that says that we have to sign up on that roster. And there's really nothing except our own personal ethics that say, when we do sign up, we have to show up. Because, but, there is, and I don't think, really, there's a possibility, a lot of people are not aware, that we are paid volunteers. We are, we're paid a stipend to take the shift, and we're paid when we actually have a call. It's, it's a minimal amount for the time involved and the, the stress that comes along with it, but we are paid.
So, we're looking at...
But we're like contract labor, is what we are. That, that's, I guess legally, we're contract labor. We're, we like run our own business.
So, we're looking at appointing an interim director of the Texas Regional District, accepting contract applications for backup in Karnes County, and request bids for a full-paid twenty-four, seven service for Karnes County. Now, are we also looking at leasing?
Leasing or purchasing a building.
You're talking about South Texas Regional?
Building.
Texas Regional. What are you, South Texas or Texas? I always ask something to it, thanks.
Just think of Texas A&amp;M.
Are they willing to lease that building?
The what, Norma?
Are they willing to...
Are you willing to lease that building?
We need to get into the discussion with that.
And, I mean, Scott, I mean, Scott said it best, we just need somebody out there to pick up people. Can't have that happen, so... I'm accepting direction right now, I told you, I don't know anything about EMS, I don't like blood. So after today's meeting, what I would like to know is what to tell our nurses that I would advise her, are we going to, are we going to be an nine-one-one service? Or, I mean, we don't want to tie up Texas Regional, and they're going to be an nine-one-one service. That's what we need to know, what to do.
When you're going through a contract with the backup.
There hasn't been a change as of yet, that's the...
No, I understand.
They, he, what they're saying is, the hospital needs to have at least some, need time, as well as Texas Regional needs to have need time. Look, are you going to have somebody today, don't call me at seven o'clock in the morning and say, hey, I ain't got nobody today, so call Texas Regional, wherever, tell them to get a truck ready. Or the hospital needs to transfer somebody out.
And when you contract a service to backup, can't come. Please remember to not deplete the resources to the point that I started to contribute to a higher, more corporate level care. I cannot have, we agree, we're good people, but I can't keep those people...
Occurrences that...
Keep that in mind.
And that's the whole point, you can't scam on emergency medical services, that's why they're in emergencies.
We are, we are.
That's ridiculous. What's that, Stacy?
I think we need to know, though, from the nine-one-one service, are they going to continue being, you know, trying to volunteer? Can we get more volunteers in, but they had gone, we had volunteers that left because they didn't necessarily like how it was going. So, are some of these people willing to come back and be able to volunteer, and then we go on as business as usual, like, you know, we have been? That's, because nobody has said anything about that, or, you know, is everybody willing to still volunteer? And, yes, get an interim director, and...
I don't know of anybody, I mean, until a decision is made, nothing's happening until the thirtieth. The thirtieth is going to be the day of change.
Right.
So it depends on what happens on that day as to what I personally would do, because this is not my living.
Right.
You know, I do it because this is something I like to do, it's not my living that I make doing this.
But do you want to continue volunteering? I mean, if there's changes.
Yeah, I would stay, but I can't do, I'm all for the paid service, although that will not affect me, because the only thing I do is night, night shifts. So, a paid service for me doesn't affect me, but I will support anybody that stays. But it's going to depend on our direction of leadership, is what's going to make me, because my patch that I work for...
Right, I understand that.
Means a lot to me.
Right.
So, however that direction goes, that's going to make my decision.
I think more than anything, just interim right now, you know, are we going to, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at.
I see no, you know, people I know in EMS, I see no reason to think that you just walk away that it's like you said, do the work.
And I know that's what the ER and the hospital is concerned about. We want to continue doing the job that we do.
Yeah, and, and I agree, and my thing is this, is that the hospital needs to maintain what they, they have to do. I mean, I always agree with what the hospital does and what Mike says. It's just a game that we play. But, but, like Scott said, well, you said it perfectly, he said, most important thing is provide care for the citizens of Karnes County. I don't care if it's Mickey Mouse or Donald Duck.
Right.
Just so we have somebody there to pick somebody up and administer the best care that possibly can.
Well, knowing that...
One other thing the Commissioner's Board needs to understand, that license issued by the state was issued to Karnes County EMS. There was a staffing plan presented that said you will keep two people on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That, the county is liable for that. So that, so that license is either surrendered or expired. Now, y'all have been using the Ambulance Association to provide your staff, but all in all, the county is on the line for this. Those days that that unit didn't staff, y'all are out of it. So, just a little food for thought.
Knowing that Johnny's resignation, retirement is effective June thirtieth, and that is a week away, give or take, don't you think there should be a meeting sooner than next Friday to at least appoint an interim to build, to continue the operations, because the state has to be notified within that timeline after the effective date of his retirement?
An interim is just appointed by the judge, right?
That, I don't know. Is it? I see you shaking your head, I don't want you shaking over there.
I can't hear any questions.
I said, did you, was it, I don't know if the interim is an appointment by me or by the court.
I would, I don't know, but I, I would guess the court probably will. Well...
I, I would want to be correct.
We need to have one before.
I can do that, I just need the direction, okay? That's all I need, I'm not asking anybody to wait till the twenty-eighth or whatever, just I need the direction.
Okay, I'm, I'm, we need what, let me set it Tuesday.
What is Tuesday? The twenty-first? We're in county court, so it'll be another evening, meeting, which is fine, that way everybody can hear what's going on.
You got time posted tomorrow?
What is tomorrow, Friday? If, if, I have appointments in the morning in a budget workshop, but I'll try to, what do we just want to point, interim director? You want all this? You want all this on there?
Interim director.
I mean, we could do the appointment of the interim director, uh, the discussion for the application for contracts, the request for EMS bids for twenty-four, seven.
That's your legitimate.
The only thing that I don't know is, we have to see by statute, how long we have to run, I don't know anything about EMS, your postings, there's never been a problem with EMS in Karnes County till just now. And so I don't think anybody's ever dealt with this before, they could come across and tell me exactly what we need to do today. So Herb's going to have to look at that, I'll post it, if it's wrongfully posted, we'll pass that item. Because I don't know what statute says. Do you?
In the bylaws in Karnes County, it'll say that they don't move the director to its final judgment.
Does it state that?
If you can find by...
But that's in the society bylaws.
That's a allegation by the county. No, but Johnny was originally invited to...
I would rather be...
I would be the answer for the judge.
I would rather it be the, I mean, I want everybody to know what's going on, do whatever.
It comes back to how you handle any other type of... You got the, you got the genuine, all right. Now, the hospital has a question, your question still. Tomorrow morning, seven o'clock, what's going to happen? They have, who do they call to get transport out? Is Karnes County EMS going to have a nine-one-one shift tomorrow? We have to talk to Acadian, Dennis Kelly, or South Texas here, man? Hey, send a truck all day, come Saturday and Sunday, the same thing, during the daytime. What's going to be the...
My question would be...
Okay, wait, there's too many conversations going on, go ahead.
Just can't count, we have EMS tomorrow morning, or we're having a half a day off?
Yeah.
Or a year off, because it's Friday. That's my question.
That's...
I don't worry about, about my transfer service, because, and, and, that's the reason, that's the reason it's careless, when they don't cover nine-one-one, or any other service.
And that's my whole point.
And there's some great people there responding, but I cannot have three minutes, an hour, two hours of pretty little people, because I don't have an evidence. So I need nine-one-one every hour, for twenty-four, seven, for the company. One for me, I'll be...
Waited a long time for some of those too, so, won't go there. Uh, so do y'all, that's what we want, we want to appoint, do we have somebody that's going to cover volunteer services, I guess is his question? Is that going to be covered by the volunteers?
Could you, could you roster cover through next week, though?
No, it's not.
Oh, no.
I can, I can tell you right now, I sent out a roster an hour ago, I can tell you it is not covered.
So no nine-one-one this weekend?
Yes.
I'm here for nights, afternoon days, whatever you do, you know?
This one, we have, has scheduled, because we sell them for...
I mean, the EMS people have to talk. Everybody wants to, instead of the schedule to the hospital, no, in Texas Regional.
But we need to know, we're leaving here, is there going to be somebody to cover volunteer services, to pick people up off the road if something happens? That's what we need to know.
I could do nights of our day shift, our full-hour shift, and my, uh, pay my salary, and I'm only volunteering nights.
Still doesn't answer her question, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
No, no, I work day shift, I can't do day, because I work, day shift is a fact, that pays my bills.
Right.
I'm volunteering nights.
I understand, I understand.
I said it already, I can't do days.
Judge, I mean, uh, you definitely, obviously, we can have, we can have, we can have here.
I, I just asked the same question to Stacy, because I know there are only here, but we, this is Thursday night. I guess the question, Dennis and Stacy, I know for that tomorrow day is not covered, but tomorrow night is, you know, cover that tomorrow day unless somebody comes down and covers. I also know that as it stands right now, the weekend is over, but that doesn't mean it's going to be that way of the time of today.
The way this agenda is written, it says, discussion, consideration, action in regard to EMS services. Do we want to have South Texas Regional covering days for us, and volunteers covering nights, until we have this meeting, figure out what's going on? Is that what we want to do?
Yes.
I mean, I want to make sure that all of, you know, if somebody gets hurt, we need to pick them up.
Yes.
That's a question. Do you think y'all want to do it?
Dennis, where'd you go? Can we do, can we do volunteer services? Do y'all want to cover evenings right now? Is that what y'all want to do?
Some of us can only do evenings.
Right, because y'all work, and that's very understandable. Do y'all want to cover evenings right now, let South Texas Regional cover days? So we get back to this agenda, and see if y'all can pull this EMS back together, or see what it is that you guys need to do to figure it out? Because absolutely, the decision's up here, but we need guidance from you.
Judge, Mr. Kelly, I mean, like I mentioned, we're at a B-bill, that's our closest truck. If you guys get in a bind, pick up the phone notification, you can help the hospital out.
And laws require us, they all notify the state of this, and it be published in the paper. That's straight out of...
The law requires that we notify the state of what? Of this, of an emergency appointment, of a three-day thing? Do we have to notify them?
Yes, because Karnes County...
I don't know the statute on that.
Is the provider of nine-one-one services.
And we have to be the provider, we can't leave people out there with no service.
Technically, if you've got other services stepping up like this, like here, you're covered, you're loved. As long as someone is guaranteed to be there, you're covered.
It's like mutual aid, Dan, it's like mutual aid.
That's correct. If they are self-covered.
But if you're not staffed, and it says you will provide staff...
And so... Okay, so, when we, when we make this action, you know what, I, it doesn't matter, we'll make the action, if the volunteers will cover at night, will you cover during the day? I mean, if we get in trouble, I'm used to getting in trouble, I'll take the blame. Will you please cover during the day? Will you just please come cover during the day? Anytime that nine-one-one doesn't answer a call, Dennis, Stacy, will you come?
Yes.
Okay. Can we get, can we get a motion, have Dennis and Stacy help us with this nine-one-one service thing, until we can figure out, we can post this meeting, I will post this meeting for, what'd we say, Monday?
Tuesday.
Can I make that? You said Tuesday.
I'll make that one.
Wait a second, what is today? Thursday.
Three, Thursday.
So I have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, okay. I can get something ready between now and then to post that meeting, and if we need help, you've promised that our Karnes County citizens will not be laying out there if there's a, a bump in the road. That's what I need. So...
So Texas Regional will take over tomorrow morning at seven a.m.?
So, Texas Regional will cover for us during the day, and the volunteers will cover at night, is that what we're doing? So we can figure out what we're doing?
Today, seven a.m. Five, six, five.
Okay.
Hold it, okay, listen. Go ahead.
So, if Dennis, if you can start tomorrow morning at five o'clock, what do you have on the roster, Shelby? Shelby's looking at rosters as we speak, he's got his little pad thingy on, and the rest of us don't, I have a wireless printer in here.
I just sent one out.
She's got a, I don't think, a printer's camera. Uh, open up, okay. The roster looks this way. Friday night is covered, Friday during the daytime, Saturday day and night, and Sunday day are not covered.
Can you cover what he just said is not covered?
I'll provide you a list.
Let the copy?
Will you give, will you take a copy of that, make sure that our citizens are taken care of?
Friday.
Will you send her a copy of that? And then can we get our EMS personnel together to discuss what you guys want to do when this new agenda comes out? So we can get everybody on the same page, trying to work together to make sure that these citizens are picked up? And we'll do this Monday sometime, is that the, I'll get this typed as soon as I can tomorrow morning, and get it done. Is that what we're doing? Now, we need, we need to, it says discussion, consider act, we need to act upon that, so I need a motion and a second, and then we need to agree upon it of what we just said with Stacy and Dennis. And I mean, I don't know how, uh, do we want to say as needed, do we want to give a timeframe? I don't think we can give it, it's as...
As needed. Plus, we need to figure out, uh, we need to get the attorney to draw up a memorandum understanding with, with Texas Regional, so they can at least be duty compensated for the truck and personnel.
Do we need a MOU, or is a, is a court action enough?
We, we probably still need something.
MOU would be probably better, if possible.
Herb, we're supposed to ask them in writing, I don't have time to ask them in writing. Can you do that tomorrow morning?
Yes.
I mean, like, can we get here tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Can we look up statute or something, and figure it out, while I type the agenda?
I got the motion. Second, this?
Okay, did you... Okay, did you get that Carol just said? Ask, tell me if it's not clear.
I, I, I think that your motion is that Sunday night and Friday night are covered by volunteer EMS, and the rest of the time, Texas Regional will take care of the nine-one-one calls as needed.
Can we put a clause in there that says if it's not covered by volunteer services, that Texas Regional will cover that also? Just in case something happens, if somebody gets sick for the person that was supposed to say call, if something does happen? Then we'll have the backup.
He's gonna notify the hospital, and we need to find out, find that out.
If, how do you find out which part? You only got, you only got volunteers covering two days right now, you know what this is.
Sheriff's office. In this fact, you have to be told.
Would you do that, Sheriff? Thank you. So, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, none, motion carries three zero, and we'll try to get this fixed. Next one on the agenda is to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, none, motion carries three zeros.